From the executive session at ten sixteen. We discussed with council, the animal shelter MOU and whether to extend the deadline. We were advised, I can say that we should grant the extension. I moved that we grant a two week extension to June twenty first.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. What do you think we need to do next? Want to start with page Kincaid's stuff or knock out some smaller stuff? We may need to, is that time sensitive?
Yeah. I think he's.
Think he's what?
I think he's okay. But I'm gonna text him. And then I'll. Don't have like.
Let's see a couple of board appointments on here.
Now, what we could do is.
Okay. All the changes. We're trying to say, I'm just making sure there's nothing we have to make ready for.
I think.
Alright. Alright, so we're at the discussion about the. About West Virginia American Water and the Public Service Commission's recommendation that all the lawyers and commission. Or the PSDs at Golly River, Canal Falls and Armstrong Creek get together. We also asked that the council for Paige Kincaid. Because we wanted to discuss since the question is whether West Virginia American Water has to evaluate. I guess whether to take over Golly River, Canal Falls and Armstrong Creek. We first, we wanted an update on how the transition is going for Paige Kincaid, which is a possibility for last year. Can anybody speak to that? I don't.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, and tell us your name, even though some of the. Not all of us do.
Well, good morning, I am Brooks Chrislop. I'm the Director of Business Development with West Virginia American Water. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and hopefully we can kind of facilitate some conversation on some of the challenges water wise here in the county. To with regards to Paige Kincaid, we completed, we have our Director of Engineering here who can speak to some of the specifics as to how that went. Those are questions. We completed the acquisition of the patient water system at the end of December in twenty twenty, I believe. We've been providing water since then and then we closed on that acquisition late last year, end of twenty one. So as far as that, as far as patient Kate is concerned, that transaction has been complete. We're providing water to those folks and have made all those upgrades and changes and largely that's finished as far as we know.
What's the latest on the sewage? Weren't you guys supposed to evaluate, take that over or something?
As part of the PSC's intervention in that back in twenty twenty, they asked us to take a look at that. That was never really, we didn't move forward with that with regards to the wastewater system from the board's perspective or from ours. It was evaluated, but never, never came to a closing point.
So what's, what's next with that? Did the PSC get the results of the evaluation and just opt to leave it intact?
I think the focus at the time was on solving the water issue and there really wasn't any further discussion with regards to wastewater. Once the water transition was completed.
May I? Okay. First, I want to thank everybody for showing up. This is a. A necessary evil because of the service of customers from in that area. Brooks and I have talked multiple times on different things. As far as the sewer, at first it was going to be, but then it wasn't. So the sewer was left for Paige Kincaid, but we still have an issue of not receiving all the funds. Paige Kincaid still has the issue of not receiving the funds from Western American Water. And part of those funds even comes to County Commission that have not been received yet. So I specifically would like to know about where we stand with the funds. How long before Paige Kincaid gets all their funds that they was do them since it was closed in December and we're still waiting?
Well, I could comment on what we've done. You know, we met all of the obligations of the contract that we entered in, that the PSC approved and that the Paige Kincaid Board negotiated. Made all those payments timely. There are a couple additional debts that were disclosed after the closing. We have taken care of, there was a bank loan that we took care of and there's some additional. Debts that were brought to our attention again after the closing and after we completed payments. I can't comment on what the patient Kate Board has done with the money that was wired to them. I understand that there is a deficiency on the County Commission side. We are willing to discuss that as a potential option of us making a direct payment to the County Commission to make the county whole. But again, we feel like we've gone above and beyond the requirements of the agreement that we struck and have met all of our obligations. But we are certainly willing to take care of that outstanding issue so that the county is not shorted.
Um, okay, Mr. Fowler, are you here? Raise your hand. Oh, okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Fowler's with the Public Service Commission. You also have a staff attorney with you possibly?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Please take back that. That. There was an issue with Paige Kincaid PSD. As far as getting all of the financials from the PSD, from what I'm being told. And that West Virginia American Water and Paige Kincaid will work on this to get this taken care of. And that we would like to have our money too, wouldn't we?
Yes, well, he mentioned that already.
Yeah. So. Would it help if we had everybody introduce themselves around the room so we know who we're talking to?
If you want to.
Okay. Brooks, will you start with your team on who you have with you and then go through the back and come back up to the front? Because we got a lot of folks here that we're dealing with, with three different PSDs and it would do us a lot of good if we had names.
Absolutely, yes, we have Rob Passmore is our counsel for West Virginia American Water. We have Chris Callis from Jackson Kelly, who's our external counsel, also representing West Virginia American Water. And then to my right over here, we have Mike Ramo, who's our Director of Engineering for West Virginia.
Okay. Alright.
Step aside here for a minute.
So everybody met Mr. Fowler already. He's with the PSD or PSC out of Charleston and in Jim?
My name is Stephen Rock, the Page Commissioner for the Page Kincaid PSD.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim.
Rap Argent, Fowler, Public Service.
Okay.
Jerry, who's for the state of.
Back rides with the Thrasher Group.
Okay.
My name is Chris Irons, Staff Attorney with West Virginia Public Service Commission. I'm Mr. Fowler, in your division. This is Mr. Roger Eastep with the Mission Utilities Division. He is our law clerk for the summer and he's here for us.
Okay. Uh, right up in front of you. Sir.
Yeah, touch once I step in Johnson here on behalf of Canal Falls PSD.
Okay.
Also the General Manager Joey Goodnight with Canal Falls PSD and the Chairman of the Board.
Okay, what about the gentleman behind you?
It's all me, sorry.
Oh.
Brooks introduced me as Mike Ramo, Director of Engineering for West Virginia American.
Okay. Peter. Here, go ahead.
Jim Keltz, Bull's Rice, here on behalf of Golly River PSD.
And then Phil.
Yeah, Armstrong Public Service District and General Counsel.
Okay.
We have some, do we have Carl Harris on Zoom and others? Talk to him. You don't see him?
See a Carl.
It's probably him.
Yes. I tested this morning, so I thought I shouldn't be there.
Sounds like you got it, darn it.
Mr. Fowler, could you come up and give us a rundown of what's going on? And why this meeting was called?
Well, the Commission issued an order just recently requesting that the parties get together. You had helped arrange this meeting. We're here to help facilitate any discussion they may wish to have. Little background. In January, February, the Mount Olive Correctional Facility Lost Water Service and the Commission instituted a general investigation into the water supply for that facility. They have named as parties in that case as the Golly River Public Service District, Canal Falls Public Service District and West Virginia American Water Company. Staff is currently preparing a report. Which will analyze, trying to define what caused that water outage and provide recommendations going forward to avoid another one. Also, as part of the general investigation, we'll be looking into the operating practices of Golly River PSD and making any recommendations there. That's my way of background. So Mr. Tissue's here, and if you don't mind, I'll back up Paige Kincaid for a second. We are aware generally of some of the issues with the closing of Paige Kincaid. There was some, I guess, some debts or some loans that were disclosed after the closing. And I think Western American and Paige Kincaid are working to resolve those. It doesn't involve the Commission at this point. You had asked a question about Paige Kincaid sewer and I'm going back. My recollection about two years ago. Paige Kincaid has applied for and received some funding commitments for a lot of grant funds to complete an additional extension of their sewer system. In order to avoid jeopardizing those funds, they could not be acquired by a private company, which was Western American. So that led partially at least to the decision to allow Paige Kincaid to remain in the sewer business, at least until those projects move forward. Just a little way of background there. Any further questions? Maybe. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, we have Summersville here because Summersville has vested interest in the water that they deliver to Golly River PSD. So James is here from their department. Let's go ahead.
Oh, you're pointing that back to me? Okay.
Yes. I just wanted to get the preliminary stuff out.
Okay. So I was, I was a little curious before I like sit down, Mr. Fowler. With regard to Armstrong Creek, how did, how did it play in? Was it part of the investigation? Did it come up?
At this time, the Commission has no investigation pending with Armstrong Creek PSD. There's no case been opened. Armstrong was brought up by West Virginia American Water Company during the last status conference with the Commission a couple of weeks ago. And the Western American indicated at that point they may be. Filing a case against Armstrong PSD. So Western American might be able to answer that better. I think Western American at that point spoke to a kind of a regional solution. Very, very early in that process.
That stood out to me because I know when we were advising the past of the issues with Mount Olive, that Golly River and Canal Falls and Summersville were all players to some extent, but Armstrong Creek did not come up.
That is correct. The general investigation that we have opened does not involve Armstrong PSD. Just for information, Armstrong PSD is receiving a certificate to construct improvements to their facilities right now. That has been through the Commission and I believe was approved or is pending approval.
In. I want to ask you one question. It was a proposal put from PSC on West Virginia American Water to come up with a plan for all these listed, including Armstrong Creek?
It's. At the last status conference, Western American indicated that they would be willing to pursue a regional facility, a regional plant, including Armstrong PSD.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, and I thought so, but I wanted.
But it, you know, just to be clear, Armstrong is not part of any formal proceeding right now.
Right.
Commissioners, I'm at. Rob Passmore, General Counsel at West Virginia American. Armstrong was discussed at the PSC hearing and we brought it up. As you may or may not know, West Virginia American, many years ago, acquired, I want to say about thirty customers in Montgomery Heights area. That are supplied their water by the Armstrong PSD. Because, because we get the water from Armstrong PSD, we also know when there are issues with that water service, including violations. You know, things such as, I believe they were running their plant without coagulant for a little bit there. So we have a long history of trying to help Armstrong provide good water to our customers in Montgomery Heights. We are in the process of working on a distressed utility or and/or a complaint on behalf of those customers in Montgomery Heights. And we saw an opportunity for regionalization that might involve Armstrong as we are dealing with the other issues in the Golly River, Canal Falls area. And so, yes, we have brought it up, but Mr. Fowler is correct, right now there is nothing in front of the Commission. We anticipate that we will be filing something in fairly short order that will hopefully. Address or at least make the Commission aware of the issues our customers in Montgomery Heights have been experiencing.
Jonathan. Canal Falls takes care of the wastewater for. For every, who, who all do you take care of them? For Armstrong Creek? Who takes care of the wastewater for Golly River? Golly River takes care of their own?
There's no central wastewater system served the Golly River area.
Okay.
The prison is served by Smithers, I believe. With their wastewater, but the rest of the customers of Golly River.
I'm sorry about that. Commissioner, we do service the prison.
Yeah, I thought so, because you had that chopper with all the sheets and everything coming in, all the shoes going on there. Okay.
I believe it's true.
I'm the chopper.
So what are, what are the next steps? I mean, so is West Virginia American Water. Study these things and because I know that Golly River or Canal Falls and Summersville, at least, they come up with a. A solution of sorts that they thought for the water issues and it seemed like that kind of had not been considered. Or at least, you know, of course, I wasn't able to go to that. We've, I found out about it a couple of days before the meeting was gonna happen, so we weren't able to hear. But just kind of wondering how or if a possible solution by the PSDs can provide water to the prison. Is, would be incorporated into a long term plan?
Right, yeah, and I think when we, when we discussed with the PSC, I think the takeaway at the end of that hearing was, and that's, I think, what precipitated this meeting was. Have the parties come together, continue some discussion to try to come to some sort of resolution. Bring that potential solution back to the Public Service Commission and present that. So I think that each, each interested party here in the room would have a different variation of what the best solution would be. I can speak on our behalf and I think one of, one of the things that we would like to present is again, is that, that idea of regionalization. I think there's an opportunity there with some of the struggles that have been taking place, not just with the, with the prison, but with Armstrong and some of the other PSDs there. There's, there's an opportunity to provide better service to the entire area through regionalization, maybe some consolidation. Because we have, I think, three, three PSDs providing service to a relatively small area. So that can create some inefficiencies, can create some challenges with water service on, you know, one side of the road versus the other. We have service from the New River, we have service from Charleston that kind of are on both ends of this area. So from, from our standpoint, there's an opportunity there to maybe do some combination, whether that's an acquisition of all of those, whether it's a consolidation down to one PSD that we work with. There's some different, different options there, but that would be, the solution we would propose would be somewhere along those lines. Again, with the interest being, what's the best solution for the people who live there?
I got one question. On this proposal that you're putting together for the PSC, would it include sewer?
We, right now, as far as Jonathan touched on, what's in front of the PSC is with regards to water. That being said, we are happy, we provide sewer service to the city of Fayetteville. We're looking to expand wastewater service all over the state, so we'd certainly be open to, to looking at wastewater service in that area as well.
Should we not want to put it in with the proposal?
Well, the PSC hasn't asked for that yet, so the proposal will be with regards to just water. However, like I said, we'd be happy to take a look at that and make that a part of a consideration for sure.
Brooks, I know one thing that concerns Summersville. Unfortunately, where they had the deputy shot. Mayor couldn't be here today because he's serving five hundred officers that's coming in. So. Again, that was a very bad situation, but Summersville would want to make sure that their system maintains what they have now. I mean, you've talked with, with Mayor before, I've got James here now that can also talk about it. But it's important that they stay intact.
Sure, yeah, and that's, we don't want to, we don't want to create, when we provide a solution, we don't want that to be to someone else's detriment or another municipality's detriment. So we'd certainly be willing to work with Summersville and have some discussions there on what's, again, what's going to be the best solution for providing service to that area.
In turn, then you've got Canal Falls, which, you know, delivers the water to the prison in a roundabout way. So, and then you have all the wastewater coming over from. Up the creek. So there's just a lot of variations that you can do with, with three small PSDs. But one thing that we all need to keep at the top of our mind are the consumers, the customers that are there.
Right.
They want to go over and turn up and turn the thing and have it going and the water turns on or they hit the flapper and it's going to flush and go away. You're looking at a system that has a lot of older customers. And. I mean. Over the, over the years, West Virginia American Waters asked for wage increases, just like American Power does. I mean, Appalachian Power now has a huge increase that they're looking to try to get. And with everything going up, our older citizens don't have the ability to do that. So. The bills, I know they need to come and we need to pay for things, but maybe it's time that these utility companies. Says, hey, Mr. and Mrs. Stockholder, it's great that we've delivered a lot of money to you over the years, but right now we need to look at taking care of our people.
Understood, yeah, and a couple of things. One, we do offer a low income assistance program for customers that qualify for that. Second, with regards to rates, one of the things that comes with that is we do have a lot of resources. We have customers all over the state, we provide water to a little over thirty percent of the entire state. So one of the benefits that comes with that is we have the ability to fix some of these problems and address some of these issues. So when you talk about reliability, as you just touched on, that's equally important, I think. It's like you said, the ability to have, turn the tap on and clean water comes out and it's reliable likewise for the prison. I think that's kind of what, what got us here to begin with. So, yeah, the counter, I guess, would be that, you know, the rates are a little bit higher in some cases. However, there's, there's, there's additional resources and opportunities to come with that, so.
Have you guys ran in a report to give an idea of what the, the water usage payment would be? For each individual PSD?
How do you mean?
Well, let's say, I know you base your stuff on fifteen hundred gallons of water. So let's say an average of, like they have, three thousand gallons or two thousand gallons, what's that price going to be for these consumers?
Well, yeah, our rates are, we have a single tariff across the state, which is set by the PSC. So we just completed a rate case here recently where the PSC awarded what our, our new rates would be. It was a slight increase over our past rates. However, that, again, that, that's spread across over thirty percent of the state. So a nice thing would be if we had to invest ten, fifteen, twenty million dollars in the Fayette County area, that's not going to be. Paid for directly by those folks here, that would be spread out across our entire customer base. And again, that provides the flexibility to make some of those changes and make those upgrades with a potentially pennies increase on a bill as opposed to, you know, an insurmountable amount of bill.
So you're not going to say, I'm going to give these three PSDs a surcharge of twenty five dollars to help pay for this amount of money that I'm spending here? That you're going to be able to take it across the entire state?
Well, it would depend on what kind of situation we're talking about. If we're talking about an acquisition where we would just acquire the PSDs, that would be, you know, a situation where they would shift over to our rates. If we're talking about working on some kind of public-private partnership where the PSD continues to exist and we're working with them. To the degree work is done, surcharges could be added, but the PSD kind of handles that, that, that end of things. So it really depends on what solution is the best option from a financial standpoint for everybody as well. So that's something we kind of look at throughout the course of this process, so.
Okay. Do you mind if I ask them a question? Alright, so I know that we've talked. And you would like to look at a private partner, private public partnership. It's easy for me to say.
Yeah, it's tongue twister, yeah.
Yeah. In order to keep the bills a little bit lower. By saying, saying that, have you decided? You know, looking at this, where would be the best option? How can you do it? I mean, like Commissioner Taylor said, Summersville and Canal Falls worked on a deal that was rejected by. You know, I mean, yeah, Golly River. So, or it was accepted, part of it was accepted and part of it wasn't. It's just. We want to do the end what's good for our big kind of customers.
Right. Yeah, and I think that's part of the bigger conversation to have today is kind of, is seeing what's going to work best with everybody, what that solution might be, whether it's a consolidation down to one PSD, whether it's a full acquisition of all, you know, just kind of looking at exploring those possibilities. We're in the early stages of kind of walking through what that financial evaluation will look like and something we can present to the PSC. They've given us several months to kind of put that together, it takes some time. So we're in the, in the middle of that process trying to figure that out. Yeah, we're open to, again, as you just said, what's the best for the, for the customers here?
Okay, have all three PSDs shared with you their financials?
No, not yet.
Is that part of the evaluation?
Yes, that's something we would need to be able to complete that evaluation. There's, there's a list of a handful of items that would, would help move that process forward.
Okay, what else would you need?
I've got a list, I'd be happy to provide it. It's, it's largely, you know, grant debt obligations, asset list, depreciation schedules, a lot of those type of things. So it's, it's fairly extensive, so longer than that, you, you get more if I sat here and listed it all to you, but we can certainly provide that and, and start working through that, that process as well.
Could you please communicate that to? Our staff?
Sure.
Let them know what exactly is being done. Make sure that she's in on the communications because then she can disseminate stuff to us that is, that, you know, it's important for us to know.
Sure.
Want to get that list of the PSDs involved?
Yeah, so would you like us to distribute that through the County Commission or work directly with the PSDs? We're kind of happy to have, do you want to facilitate that?
Yeah, just add us to the PSD list of stuff that you're sending out. For the requirements that you got.
Go ahead, Alex. I'd like to hear from each of the parties present, just so we can see where y'all stand on things and get everybody's voice out there. Everybody's here at once. Want to start?
Sure.
Jim Keltz, Bull's Rice, here on behalf of Golly River Public Service District. Thank you for convening this. The, but the one thing I want to make clear is the, you know, we've had two status conferences at the PSC. At the end of the last status conference, the chairman said, you know, she asked the parties to meet to consider acquisition, regionalization, consolidation, public-private partnership. There's no one, there's no Plan A in that. Okay, we're looking at what can, you know, as you say, work best to serve the interests of the customers. And there are a number of projects that are underway and I thought I prepared this sort of snapshot. So. Yeah, well, wasn't able to, so Armstrong PSD has a project that's been through, received a certificate of convenience and necessity from the Public Service Commission. That project's going to go out to bid here in the next couple of months. I, the, when I prepared this last night, I wasn't able to speak with Mr. Tissue. He tells me completion should be summer of twenty twenty-three on that. And that project is going to replace the Paladin tank and replace four miles of line. And with that, you know, a lot of the boil water advisories that have been coming out of Armstrong PSD are due to. and replace four miles of line. And with that, you know, a lot of the boil water advisories that have been coming out of Armstrong PSD are due to line breakages on old line. And so replacing the four miles of line should reduce the the boil water advisory incidents for Armstrong. Mr. Tissue can talk about that project in in better detail than I can. Armstrong has two rate structures. It has the Armstrong is, of course, the merger of Deepwater PSD and Armstrong PSD. You you see the rates there, the the Deepwater PSD, former Deepwater PSD customers pay the lower rate. Right now, they're for the statewide average of thirty-four hundred gallons per month. That's the statewide residential average. The Deepwater folks are paying forty-five, twenty-seven, and the Armstrong, the the remaining Armstrong customers are paying fifty-four, fifty-eight. When this project is done, the rates are going to shift to the the numbers in in the brackets. One of the things that good things that has emerged with the the Rescue Plan Act, you all have received your local funds. The state has received its state fund. And the legislature has moved two hundred and fifty million over to the Water Development Authority to cover bid overrun. So you're aware that there's supply chain problems and inflation and price escalation. The great thing is the WDA has two hundred and fifty million of grant money available. So the rates you hear, see here, those those post-project rates, the bids coming high, those are still going to be the rates. Because Armstrong can go to the WDA and get grant money to cover the bid overrun. So that's a good thing. Golly River PSD. Okay, we you see that we have a rate case pending before the PSC. Staff of the PSC has recommended a five and a half percent increase to to take our monthly rate up to the fifty-nine, forty-three number there. We have two projects that are underway. The Infrastructure Council has approved our preliminary engineering report and and funding package for the Route Thirty-Nine project. That's going to, there's about five miles of line between Golly Bridge and Belva area. That's our principal pipe that we get water from Canal Falls PSD. That's the oldest segment of line in our system. We've had some breaks there. Obviously, you know, those breaks are very consequential. When we repaired those breaks, we found that the original construction was not, you know, laid in pea gravels. It should have been. So it's vulnerable to to, you know, more problems in the future. Our engineers here to talk about that project in greater detail. But we have received a funding package from recommendation from the Infrastructure Council. It's a five point three million dollar project. We've got about two point nine million of grants from various sources, and we got two point four million alone. And we're going to have to push our our rates up about two bucks a month to undertake that project. And we think we can have that project done by January twenty twenty-four. That will increase the reliability of our receipt of water from Canal Falls PSD. The other project we have, which we're going to file, I believe, this Friday with the Infrastructure Council. The Infrastructure Council has a new program. It's Critical Needs Program, which is a smaller grant program that goes through faster. We're asking for one point eight million. This will allow us to take more water from Summersville. The that will give us redundancy of of water supply, so we can have greater reliability of service to the prison and all of our other customers. That's a one point eight all grant million, grant-funded project. We're expecting that we'll be able to complete construction of that by November twenty twenty-three. So you know, that's going to go a long ways in improving reliability service to the prison. And, you know, the prison has received continuous service since February eighteenth, shortly after the PSC initiated that general investigation. We've been able to keep the tanks full. We we do await staff's report. There's still a cloud as to what actually caused that interruption to occur. But the the takeaway is, you know, between Canal Falls PSD and Golly River, we are now providing Mount Olive with reliable service. We have entered into a mutual aid agreement with Canal Falls PSD, so that it formalizes a lot of the cooperation we have done in the past, where we can call each other out and and we can, you know, borrow each other's staff, borrow each other's tools and equipment and pay that pay for that after the incident is done. But we've got a mutual aid agreement with Canal Falls PSD. Couple of things I'd like to respond to.
Can I ask one question before you do that? What's your total? How much you guys owe totally right now?
Okay, so we have we have seven point two million dollars of debt from the USDA. And and our financials and the financials, the basic financials of all these utilities, we file an annual report with the PSC that has our debts, our expenses. It's a a nice thick financial report.
Okay, so what's the total debt?
Seven point two million right now. It's going to be nine point six when we get done with this project.
Okay, so seven point two million. Okay.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Summersville did make a a propose proposal to Golly River, which the board declined to pursue. It was, the board thought it was too broad in scope. We have, one of the things we're worried about is if if we were to have Summersville take over all of our operations, if we become unhappy with Summersville, it's hard to rebuild that capability. We feel we've got good office staff. We've got good field staff. We're hiring some more people. And and we think that, you know, our our arrangements are a good and reliable arrangement. But we're we're willing to continue those discussions, and there are plans for another meeting year before the end of the month with with the other parties. On the chart is also Canal Falls PSD's project, and Todd Swanson's here, and he could talk about that better than I can, and and maybe I'll just let him do that.
Again, Todd Swanson with Canal Falls PSD. The PSD does have two projects pending that you will see right there. They did get some critical needs money from the West Virginia IJDC to purchase three pumps. One of the pumps has been delivered. The other two are which are raw water pumps. We thought we were going to get those next week, but they have been pushed back until closer to the end of this month. It has been delayed multiple times. It caused the supply chain issues that everybody's facing. We thought we were going to get those mid-February, but they keep getting pushed back. So hopefully, we will, we will get those soon. And there's not, there hasn't been any issue with the pumps that are there now. They're just just to replace, you know, the new pumps you're going to go in. The only ones that are going to come out here rebuilt and be there for for backup needs. But otherwise, you know, should not be any issue supplying enough water. There there was the issue earlier this year that impacted the supply to the prison. As best we can tell, had to do with tank levels and then the water getting too low. So we're not, you know, as Mr. Kelsey indicated, not exactly sure what happened. But since that time in early January, we're not aware if there's been any issues with water supply to Mount Olive or any of Golly River's customers. The other project you'll see on there is another IJDC project that it should go in by the the June tenth deadline to the IJDC. That's about an eight million dollar project, and that will all involve waterline replacement within Canal Falls system, which should help lower its lost unaccountable water percentage. So we anticipate that maybe June of twenty twenty-three being, or sorry, twenty twenty-four being you're completed and and in service.
What's the total debt?
Yeah, so on the water side, it's only about three hundred thousand dollars on the water, but sewer side, it's about four point six million.
Okay, and what about the water line going across the bridge that probably will end up rotten there?
Brunswick.
Brunswick Bridge, yeah.
That was a new one for me. I don't know.
So what so what's your question about it? Are you just wanting to know the debt that's there with it?
No, I just, is there a plan to try to move it or?
As of right now, all of the preliminaries that I've seen, says that the state, you know, we have, we cannot pour under that river or attach it to the bottom because of a class of muscles that fit there. They haven't been that protected. So there was an agreement with the state that we could attach it to the bridge. And then in the event that that bridge was ever replaced or torn down, that the food supply through the state would help us get that resolved. At this time, there was no talk of that bridge or the demolition of it, so the line is still there secure and open properly.
Okay. All right, now, did you guys get the telemetry units for the tank to make sure the waters' levels are are good in the tanks from coming from Golly River?
We do not have access to that. So so what happens is they're, I'm a field manager. He's tracking those levels, will call us when he's going to turn on his pumps. And so that we know that they're pulling, because it pulls from a separate tank in Golly Bridge. And then once those levels reach where he wants to shut them off, and he shuts them off. It would be better if we had access to see those, so that we could turn them off and on as we saw them reaching levels. So then that way, that would also mitigate them missing something or us not knowing you're pulling.
Yeah. So is there any way that can happen, sir?
We will look into it. Sounds reasonable to me.
Okay. That way, that would make sure the prison has water, because that's where all this started, was prison, there's not having the water. So we need to make sure that happens. Okay. Anything else?
The Canal Falls also has a rate case pending on on the water side. It hasn't had a rate increase. Or at least what, yeah, as I say, ten years, they haven't had a rate increase. They've been able to provide their customers a lot of rate stability with regard to rates, but they are in for a rate case now. Those rates will probably get into effect later, later this year.
Okay. Cool.
In regard to the the financial info, certainly Canal Falls is more than happy to provide whatever we provide. Most of all, our financial info, it's publicly available. You can access all of it on the Public Service Commission's website, but there's something that we can do to facilitate discussions. We're we're happy to do it.
Okay, thank you. That's our first opinion.
So is Armstrong Creek next?
Yes. Mr. Tissue.
Well, as you've heard previously, statements made here, Armstrong, I didn't hear anything about any of this. Nothing, neither did Armstrong, as far as I know, because we are not involved in the case that has been presented by West Virginia American Water. And so we were not in attendance at the status conference that was had that led to this meeting. So and I just learned about Friday afternoon about four o'clock, but I was supposed to be present for this. I would only add that, and I haven't been able to speak with the full board of of Armstrong because of the shortness of the notice here. But in the event, what has been stated by earlier is that that Armstrong does and has a project that has already been approved by the Public Service Commission and has a certificate of convenience and necessity. That project was referred to earlier, and we would will be pursuing that. And that certificate was issued very quickly. And so we're pursuing that as quickly as we possibly can, which would involve the replacement of the Paladin water tank and four line, four miles of the water line. And so without having talked with anyone about it and not having heard anything, and we're not involved in any particular official proceeding, that's all I have to state at this time.
I I do know that they're doing their their upgrades, which was definitely needed. I don't know if this was just a funny matter they told me, but one of the commissioners, water commissioners from there, said that the piping was in fifty-foot sections, and they're having to replace that. So it's a, it it's interesting to hear some of these sections of pipes and when they originally put them in the ground. So that's all that I have. Does have questions?
I was just going to ask, if West Virginia American Water has any more specifics for Armstrong Creek to let them know some of the issues that have come across.
As I said earlier, we are working on filing. We will do detail those those issues so that they can be addressed. Yes, we will. We will work on that. We've got, we've got some people working on that. I know our water quality folks are well versed in the issues they have.
Would you please ensure that region four and our commission gets a copy of the filing that you filed?
Certainly.
And Summersville?
Summersville, did you guys have anything to say? I know Mayor Schaefer has a sad thing.
James, come on up front.
I think everything's basically been said. You know, everyone knows we have a regional plant. We pump about thirty percent of our capacity. We do serve Golly River PSD. We probably serve thirty percent of their customers. Somewhere around the seven hundred customers is what we, well, right now, we're serving all the way to Beach Court. And we do have the capability, and and like he said, we are working on to do a new interconnection to where we can serve them more.
The super system that you guys put in, that's what I call it. What's the capacity of that system? And why did you guys put that in?
Back back originally, when the concept of reg regionalization was a big concept. We was through the infrastructure, through health department, everybody else. They wanted to regionalize all these PSDs and build one big plant versus all these little plants. And as these little plants start failing, either instead of rebuilding new plants is just restore them back to the original capacity and be able to hook on to these larger plants to say, to regionalize everything. That was the concept at the time. And when we built our plant, after our plant was built, you know, then the regionalization plan went away. Then, no, after we got our plant built online, then we actually, you know, we fought different PSDs that actually had completely plants built that refused to buy water from us. And no, we we didn't have the support at that time to force them to buy water off of us. We actually had several PSD hearings, which we lost. So now, you know, that's why we have such a large plant. We have a big white elephant, is what we like to call it. And, you know, right now, we're pumping about thirty-three to thirty-five percent of its actual capacity.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you're supplying how many percentage of water to?
I think it's around, I think we, I think we're serving right now around seven hundred of Golly River's customers somewhere in that neighborhood.
You're actually one of their customers, too?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. Yes, yes, I am. I do live in there.
See, I remember that.
Yeah, and on the O and M agreement, we did present them with a O and M agreement, which it it was a draft agreement. It did have some teeth in it. But it was rejected, and there has been no more talks about that since then, which the O and M agreement, which was going to be myself, worked sixteen hours, two days a week, just assisting with their overall management, training, management, finding loss revenue and that kind of stuff. And but I do understand, to my knowledge, that there is going, a meeting between Canal Falls and Golly River PSD, and some either June the twenty-seventh or twentieth.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. The price rate that you sell the water, Golly River, Canal, you think it drives the rate up, or is it reasonable price?
Well, compared, actually, our bulk water rate is, we're we're actually like everybody else in the room. We are, we're doing a rate increase right now ourselves. Ours right now, I think our rate is actually a little bit less than what Canal Falls is.
What do you, what do you sell the water for?
Three, it's three ninety per, it's three ninety per thousand. It's thirty-nine hundred per. Right now, we average, it depends, it averages around three million. Right now, we average, it depends, it averages around 3 million gallons what they purchase for.
Okay, so you guys send 3 million gallons to Armstrong?
No.
I mean, not to Armstrong Creek, Canal River? Jonathan, how much water do you guys send to them? Six to seven million? Okay. Okay.
And we just, back in January, this whole problem started. I actually got a call from their chief operator. Golly River's chief operator. Because at one time, we did, we served the Jody and Beach Glen area before, but because of a PRV problem, they had actually took us back off that and went back on Canal Falls. And he called me in January, he asked me if he could take more water, he needed more water. He couldn't get enough water. Well, yeah, he wondered if we could take the Jody and Beach Glen area back on. I said, well, sure. So it's been since January, we've served that area there. We've actually served it.
Well, I'm trying, I'm looking, so Canal Falls also sells water to Golly River. Is that right?
Yes.
And that was 67 million. But what's the rate per thousand that you sell Golly River? 395. I'm just trying to get some figures in my book.
Just wanted to ask, Mr. Fowler and those of you from West Virginia American Water, what do you think next steps are for me or what happens next?
I think, I think the, and Ms. Fowler, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the PSC had asked for an update, I think, in by July, as far as where we were. And then we have a follow-up meeting set for August, September, with, I think, essentially proposals from the various parties. You know, our intent is to kind of work through what we think would be the best solution and provide that, provide that proposal at that time. And then we'll, we'll go from there. But that, so for, to answer your question, the interim time here, we'll be kind of working with the various parties, having some conversations, doing some analysis on our end and working through that.
Would it be possible for us to get updates of any progress or?
Certainly.
What's happening?
Absolutely.
Thanks, Brooke.
Anybody else have anything to add?
So I'm the chairman of the North Falls PSC.
Jonathan?
I'd help Zoom here. Carl will know what you're saying.
So Carl can quiz me later. So my name is Jonathan Gross and I'm the chairman for the North Falls PSC. As you guys mentioned earlier, the, the main focus here is our constituents and their supply of water. You have alluded to the cost of debt in the PSDs and you have alluded to the increase on our patrons, on the expense of monthly expenses on their water and sewer. You know, as we look at the systems, and I know you guys are not familiar with the drawings or the maps of, of each of those. You know, Golly River has come forth with a plan to connect Summersville to their Belva tank that would allow them to have two water sources that could go to the, to the prison in the event that one of us would have an issue or if there would be a break on Route 39 that they're restoring. You know, as Kelch said, you know, in the PSC meeting, which I know you guys were not there, you know, the price on that is a tenth of probably what it will cost for West Virginia American Water to do a connect. This, our system and the size of the lines that go out as it feeds from the plant will not allow West Virginia American Water to connect at the end of our system. Because as you go out from the plant, the size of the lines get smaller. So for them to be able to pump in the flow that they would need to feed Canal Falls and then in turn feed Golly River, they're looking at a five to seven mile connection line that they would need to do. And that is not including going under the river as they bore under to connect to Armstrong Creek. We have had engineers looking into that. That is not going to be a cheap process either. Because as our system is set up, the sewer plant sets on the opposite side of the river. And we are currently a customer of West Virginia American Water because we sit in that area where they purchased those homes. So, so we have looked at how do we service our plant? And that's what got us started in looking at boring under that river. So, you know, if you're truly concerned about leaving the cost down, which I understand what West Virginia American Water was saying, that they can spread it across a broader customer base. That's true, but when you look at their tariff in the Fett County area, it's already about $20 higher than what ours is. So he told you that they have a tariff that's statewide. In the Fett County, their tariff is $20 higher than Canal Falls. So immediately, our customers would see that increase. Then you factor in the fact of them paying off our debt and doing an interconnect, you're looking at an additional increase. So I know that this is early in the process and I know that West Virginia American Water hasn't started any of their preliminaries to give you numbers, but I ask the three of you to keep that into consideration when we have been working with Golly River. You know, Summersville brought an O and M agreement, just as their manager said, it had some teeth in it. And it wasn't something that the board was willing to get behind. We were able to bring forth at least an emergency agreement with them that if there's a break, they would call us immediately. We would send staff out to help them get the lines repaired so that there was no delay or no loss of service. If we can get those, the connection with the tanks, to see that, that's only going to allow us to process and watch the levels even closer. So, you know, I think we're taking the right steps. The PSC has commissioned us to sit down and have conversations and to talk about plans to work together. And we've been reaching out to those boards and getting traction. So we're doing what the PSC had asked us to do and we're taking the right steps to move forward. I think, you know, the, the representation from West Virginia American Water said, saw it very, and spoke it very wisely when they said that they saw an opportunity. And he said that in the minutes. And this is an opportunity for them to jump in and regionalize all four of those. But we have continued to service that prison since the day it's opened with very little problems. And now there's the one instance that this happens. And yes, I agree that it is detrimental to those inmates that are there. I understand all of that. I understand the governor reaching out to each of you, saying, what is going on? I get all of that. But at the same time, too, if the telemetry is, is intact and working and we have the ability to gauge those tanks, I doubt that there will be a loss of service. That since the tariff has been in place, they are purchasing four times what the tariff says that they would normally require for that prison because of staffing. The prison is, is filled to capacity and maxed, and you all know that. So they're intaking more water than what our tariff even sets for. You know, if we set a bucket here and drill a hole in the side of it and I bring another bucket to pour it in there, it's never going to get full if we don't know that it's not there, if it's leaking out somewhere. And so when you look at the telemetry and seeing where those tank levels are, if they could not judge that on their system, then they were not aware that that tank was not full. And so what happens is Canal Falls now becomes their tank. So they were pulling from our system as their backup tank, is everything that we have seen with our engineers. So, and all of that has been remedied. So I just ask that as you guys move forward, that you take into consideration that these three PSDs are doing what the PSD commissioned them to do. And that was to sit down and talk. And we are sitting down and we are having conversations and we are moving forward.
Jonathan, you guys have a manager that takes care of water and one sewer or one takes care of both?
So one takes care of both systems. Each plant has its own operators at each of those systems.
And then how many workers do you have that works on the water lines?
So that gets a little sticky. So we currently have about 16 employees and, I'm sorry, total, total across the board. But our guys that work in the field, they work on water and sewer. So we have about eight guys that are out in the field working in our system on a daily basis.
Okay. Golly River, how many people do you have working on your water lines?
We have two field workers.
Two? And you have a manager?
No, we have an office manager and a field worker.
Okay, so no manager. And Armstrong Creek, you guys have nothing right now? Yeah, because you're in the middle of the upgrades. Okay. All right.
When you're talking about boring under the river, I'm assuming it's somewhere other than where the muscles are located.
Well, so there has not been a study done in that area, so we can, I cannot tell you that it's not going to happen. Unfortunately, when you get DNR and all that involves, I'm not saying that it's not possible. We were not able, where that crossing would have been for that bridge, there was no real place to get a rig in there to bore under. And then the muscles were an issue of attaching it to the bottom, which is how Golly Rivers was done. And the, that was torn out in the major, I'm sorry, the June flood of 2016. I don't know if you recall that, but it was attached to the bottom. We bored underneath the river behind Geno's to connect those clients. But, so we will really lean away from trying to connect it to the bottom of the river just because we saw when that happened through the flood, the disconnect and all of that, which we had a temporary connect point across the railroad truss there in Golly Bridge for about eight months as they bore under.
Anything further?
One other factor, like for the can of chemists to be aware of, I spoke earlier about the 250 million that the Water Development Authority has. That's just from the Rescue Plan Act. Congress passed a 1.1 trillion infrastructure act. That money has not hit yet. That's going to hit sometime later this year, next year. Okay. This is, I've been in, you know, the utility business for 25 years. This is the best funding environment there's ever been. And, and that's going to benefit the public entities. You know, West Virginia America is a private entity, is not eligible for the grants, it's not eligible for the subsidized loans, whereas the public bodies are. Through a very straightforward arrangement, like the projects we're applying for now to infrastructure.
Somebody else want to add anything before we conclude this?
Let me add something. Zach, right, Grasher, just kind of add something about what the two projects that Golly River has, has gone, just to clarify, make sure, make sure the commission knows what they really are. The, the first project that we've been working on for several years is to upgrade the line, basically from Canal Falls to, to the prison site. That line is, as, as others have mentioned, had some, was not constructed perfectly, perfectly the way it should have been. And it's nearing the end of its useful life anyway. So it's got some leaks on it, it's got some, got some capacity issues that this project is going to improve that. The other, the other project that we, we've just recently, that we were wanting to buy for this week increases the capacity coming from the Summersville. And it allows for, for water to be fed to the prison from the Summersville side. We're making significant improvements in the main, the main water source routes to the prison on these two projects. They're already ongoing and we're looking at, you know, a couple of years to complete those. So I just want to make sure that that, that it's understood what those two projects really are. It's going to vastly improve the, the ability to get water from the sources to the prison site.
How does wilderness play into this? I know wilderness has a connection somewhere.
Wilderness has a connection on, through Golly River, on the Summersville. And so Summersville provides water to Golly River and Golly River provides it to wilderness.
So you guys push it through to wilderness? Okay. I knew there was another party in there too, but I couldn't remember. So Summersville will have a straight line to the prison, don't you just?
Well, it, it, really what we're doing, we're upsizing the line that's there now so that it's got capacity to go through the prison, more or less. Yeah. Yeah. There's an existing 66 line, we're taking it to an 8-inch line, doing some improvements to the booster stations and, and some of just what it takes to, to make that a viable path. So if something does happen at Canal Falls, we've got, we, we can go the other direction. Something we mentioned too about telemetry and giving better communication between the systems, that's part of a study and evaluation of that is part of these current projects and depending on, we can, we can include that in the projects.
I have just another question for the lawyers, based on what you said. So if there were a public-private partnership between West Virginia American Water and any PSD, would they, them be eligible for any grant funding or not?
West Virginia American, probably best answer, I mean, I'm, you know, West Virginia American has entered into public partnerships with PSDs where the, the PSD is effectively an alter ego of West Virginia American that is a vehicle to receive grants and loans. But they, they've, they've been involved in the details of that much more than I have.
Brooks? Oh, just killed.
That's called a mic drop, right?
Woke fill up, no.
We do participate in public partnership, all of the state, and we, we partner as private partner, one piece here. We publish as private partner with, with the public partner who's eligible to receive grant funding. We didn't work with them on doing that extension project. It's a nice thing to get, it gives those local entities the opportunity to kind of fixate where where they want to prove this to take place and we're able, we're able to work with it. But they maintain, you know, control of it.
And what support do you provide them? What is your capacity when we partner?
We typically will then, will then do the operations, maintenance of the line. They'll, they'll customers. But the, the, the PSC will continue to exist and operate as, as it should. When there's addition, maybe my addition.
New Haven's a perfect.
Yeah, we are very active.
Yeah. That's what I was just writing down, New Haven's.
Pass it to me. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Give me my mic. Does anybody else have anything to add? We really appreciate all of you coming and sitting through this and informing us on what's going on. So we're kind of, we've been here in bits and pieces and we knew when things blew up with the prison and everything. But since then, you know, we haven't really had a big picture view of what's going on and what the possible solutions are. I guess the main thing we ask is that you keep us informed of the negotiations and please, as much notice as possible of any future hearings that the PSC has so we can attend and express our view.
From the staff position, you, you as a kind of commissioner, if you're going to join as part of.
Join, well, he's right here. Join as a party for
To the proceedings.
To the proceedings. We'll have to talk with him about whether we want to go that far. I mean, I'm ensuring to, I, you know, I, I want to understand the full implications of us joining as a party as opposed to maybe an interested party.
Well, it doesn't mean we have to take action, correct? We just said it's about, you know.
This is an interest of ours, so we can get copies of all the filings. Okay, well, let's look into that. All right, that's it. Moving on to the next thing. Thank you, everybody. Let's take a two-minute break. Our break was longer than we expected because we had to, I just had to take care of the legal documents that we want to get signed. And it's being printed now, but I wanted to go ahead and ask that the assessor came back. Do you like the website, would you?
Yeah, okay. For time constraints to get back to today, I could not go back and check every account because there's hundreds and hundreds of accounts each year to look back at. So I did a little, a little dig in there and Mrs. Harris, her, the property came out in her name in 2014. And from that point forward, she did not pay the taxes on eight, there were, there were eight accounts instead of five. And she paid on one of them, then paid the rest of them. So if you go back and look, it's probably about, about 20% of the $3,000 or whatever the number was she gave us that was going to cost her to redeem it. About 20% of that would be taxes. The rest of it's penalty and interest based upon, you know, what the auditor charges to interest for years or redeeming. And in 2016, or no, 2014, when hers came on the books, there were six counts, six owners per well. Three of them were getting separate tickets like her, and three of them were getting combined tickets. Or, yes. So it's like, you know. And again, I couldn't, I can't prove to you whether they requested those put together, or that was just something that happened when you were back at that point.
And they all have been paying their taxes.
Yes. And there, there's also a thing in the, in the West Virginia code, and I, I can't say the exact quote of it or the exact site of it, I can find it, but it also states that you have one year from the day a tax ticket comes out, or one year from the day that you could have discovered an error to protest the tax ticket. So, I mean, when, when was, could it have been reasonably discovered that you didn't?
Right, between 2014 and now.
And in 2021 is when she discovered, so seven years. And I think, you know, there, there've been lots and lots and lots of cases where people didn't pay their taxes, and their property gets sold to a tax company.
She had to have known that she inherited this.
That's, that's my contention, is that, look, you inherited property, and one of your duties as a taxpayer is to make sure that, you know. Yeah, I, I inherited this property, I want to make sure all my taxes are taken care of, and that you have the right mail-in address and all. And that was the biggest problem, is we didn't have run address.
Was the dress ever her dress, do you know?
In 2021, we got switched over to her dress, and I guess that's what triggered her calling.
Reciprocated that.
It was on a return. On, 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 on gas return. See, Cabot Oil and Gas was the company that had the original, when she got, when she came on the books, they, they had the well on the property. And the direct, she had her correct address on one of the wells, and the rest of them didn't. So what we did, we forwarded the ticket, Cabot Gas, and they didn't, they didn't forward it back to, to her, to her. So I, I think it really set a bad precedent if we, just can't do that, I mean. Something we can't do.
Questions?
Well, I'll, I'll make a statement. First, I feel that with anything, the citizen should have notified of a tax, of a address change. It's not on us to find out where they actually live. Second, I would also tell her she has to pay it, and then offer her to do a combin- a combining of all of her wells onto one bill. Right, well, when she gets it redeemed, if, you know, if that's right, she chooses to take, we can, we can do that easily. That's not a problem. You know, you guys want to take an under advisement or whatever you want to do, that's, whatever decision you make, that I'm fine with whatever decision you make. I told her when I talked to her that I couldn't take it off the books because there were the tax tickets, and she wanted to just, you know, pursue it higher than they said.
Anthony, do you have any?
I tend to agree with him. I mean, we all have an obligation. It's property, to make sure taxes get paid. You may not enjoy writing a check, but and I can tell you, twice a year, I make sure I get everything that I have paid. So, and, and the problem that this creates, and I also agree with that on this point, is I think it sets a, it sets a bad precedent. I mean, I think it's hard for the workers to represent whether or not they received the tax tickets. You know, they were having money problems or whatever, that this, the workers, the workers, people to misrepresent whether or not they received their tax tickets, and then subsequently trying to have the cost of, you know, the cost of redemption exonerated. And realistically, I think if, if we do it for this person, anybody else in the future that comes forward and says, oh, I didn't get my tax ticket, property was sold, and I want to be exonerated, the cost of redemption.
Well, that's the, that's the biggest line yet, is when, when, back to the only way that, well, I didn't.
Well, and, and like we talked, I know, I know what property I have.
Do I go online and look it up?
Yeah. You can access it online, you can access it over at the assessor's office. I'm sure if somebody called your office.
And one phone call would have stopped this on.
So I just think it says, to me, I agree with that, I think it sets a dangerous precedent. I said it twice, but but the reality is,
So what do you need from us to move to deny her request for an exoneration?
Yes, whatever decision you make, that was, you just have to.
Well, move that we deny the request for exoneration for the reasons set forth by the county assessor and the county prosecutor.
Second.
Always a favor.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to sign anything? If you find that you need me to sign something, they have my stuff.
You may need, you may need to write.
She didn't appear today, so I don't think we need to write her a letter.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we go down to number five?
I hope that's going to take him out. Do we have Bill Hans on? He is on there. Well, he's, he's just tested me and said that he can get back on, because he had to wait a chat, get him on the air. Do we want to do number five?
Because the couple of these guys are probably waiting to see what's going on with that, and then they can go back to work or whatever.
I'm just waiting on that five minutes.
Oh.
I'm waiting for them to provide me lunch too. I've been having to get him to provide me lunch.
We've been waiting on Tom for him.
I really just, I thought this would be over 10:30, to be honest with you.
All I've had is water.
Yeah, all that water, you will see it on Saturday.
I haven't read the policy. Gary, have you guys looked over it? I know that Kevin Willis worked with Kevin.
He is here.
Yes, I have looked over the policy, and it seems up to something, it seems like it would work fine, and it's allowed a guest work out of it.
Did they tell you what the, you know, the previous problem was? We had some arrangements, like the ones that we've had concerns about in other areas, where somebody just decided that only certain wreckers could go on one side of the bridge, and the others had to go on the other, or something like that, and I just didn't think that was fair. So Kevin worked with Kevin Walker to straighten that out, so we could get it on board. And I know you've been all about being fair and first response and rotating, sharing responsibility.
Yeah, what he put in there is pretty much using the natural divider, or the divider of the.
Gary, can you step up here, please? I'm sorry.
John, you need to speak.
Yeah, I have bad hearing, so I tend to talk about it anyways. But he used the natural divider of the New River Gorge for the towing companies. So we have the towing companies on the north side of the New River Gorge Bridge, and the towing companies on the south side of the New River Gorge Bridge. And the ones on the north side will be rotated for the request for wreckers on the north side, and the ones on the south side will be requested for the wreckers on the south side. But the bridge is the dividing line. If it's on the bridge, I guess it's a judgment call.
Just turn us first. Is that, was that acceptable to the, does that fix your concerns, Kevin? Or I thought the concerns were, we just wanted one rotation and everybody take their turn.
Well, on that there, though, like me and Kevin spoke, that, if you don't divide that, you're going to have record services that'll be kind of from the north side of the bridge running calls and packs. So you're going to have people from Plateau going down to Danies and that. It just didn't make sense because of time and geologic, you know, the geographic. So basically, if you divide it down, you've got enough service and call volume for the Plateau and that area, and then you've got enough call volume to numbers for the north side of the bridge, you know, that area over there.
So this isn't going to deny, there's no, not a whole lot more call volume on one side than the other, it's not going to deny any.
So there, the amount of wreckers that are in the, the Plateau, so right now, they were running everybody in the Plateau, even the guys on the north side of the bridge. But the thing is, me and Kevin went back and several calls, we had found that north side of the bridge was on the Plateau side, or Snowfall particularly, and there was no coverage on north side, so they were having to wait on their service to come back. And another thing that we changed in that policy is record services, so you have one record service calling another record service, saying, hey, I got my spot of rotation, can you take it? I'm on this other call over here, or I'm on this call here. And then also, there's other tow services outside of the rotation that they're giving calls to. So that, that's been brought to attention too. So this, that's pretty much just sums it up, that, you know, you have to be on that record rotation to run those calls, and also, if you don't run that call, then it needs to pass the next person in rotation.
Is there a time amount on that? I haven't read it.
There is not a time.
It's 45 minutes for a call. And there is, if you're in a Plateau, or you're in the north side of the bridge, you should get anywhere in County before that. Even if they go with April, November. But the thing that.
A problem that I ran into, and certainly wasn't here, was I was going down a road one day, and here comes a wrecker flying down the road with her yellow lights on, almost pushing me off the road. They're not an emergency vehicle. I mean, they're not, they shouldn't be traveling to the scene. Now, I understand they get 45 minutes, but they're not an authorized emergency vehicle to go down and push people off the road. But I agree with Kevin that 45 minutes, if we keep it the way it is now, any wrecker without running people off the road should be able to get there in 45 minutes.
Again, same same person.
We even looked at all the numbers, and the numbers from the Plateau, and the numbers from the north side support, I mean, honestly, perceived by support at 100%.
Mike, you want to?
Mike? We've been on the rotation for almost 22 years, have seen a lot of changes. And the divider line with the New River Gorge Bridge is an excellent idea. There were many times where there would be a three or four car pileup of Glengy and Exxon, and there'd be many times where they're sitting there watching, and the guys from the north side would come and get the cars. That really doesn't make sense to me, when you got a guy 200 yards away.
Your business is right there.
First guy is 24 miles away. And the dog, you know, you got an hour to get somebody on that car. Just mount, you got an hour, cut them out, load them up, do what you need to do, you got a golden hour to do that. And usually the wrecker guys use you the last one there, clean up the mess. But that's a very good idea, and because the guys on the north side will get everything over there, plus come over here, and guys over here never go over there. I could probably count to 24 years I've been on rotation, maybe 10 times I've been across the river, and two of those was a relative. So the divide line is a very good idea. It'll make a even plane feel for everybody in rotation. I think you'll have less friction between the tow companies as well.
Another thing that Mike has said in the past that we also put in there is, just like he said, Glengy, like Glengy exit, if there is a wreck Glengy, we added to the policy that they can offer these road clear, because there's no traffic flow.
Closest wrecker to where the wreck is.
I mean, at that Trump's, which it actually will increase the safety for the public. Because like he said, I, we've seen it numerous times, waiting on somebody on the north side of the bridge, and like, it shut down. Or, you know.
It don't take long for that to get, come up to the turnpike. It won't take long to get there.
So that, that is, that is in that policy also, that, that the dispatcher EMS, they can go to the places to where they're at.
I haven't seen that, but I'm just hearing from what they've talked.
What about that one kind of random requirement that was in there, you told me about, that something about a bed or? I'll see if I can find the terminology. You just told me that it seemed, there was a seemingly random requirement to get on the rotation list, you had to have some kind of.
So you have to have a flatbed and a, and a tow, tow.
You have to have, but, which that, that requirement there, but one I was going to leave out, is you used to be two years of in business with a wrecker and a rollback, you had to.
Roll back for sure.
But see, that was never in, that was never in the policy, that was just something that they did at an I-1 center, that was never official. So like, some services would have to wait two years to get on rotation, and some just got on rotation, because, and I, I mean, I, I mean, I'll use the example of it, and this was before my time on record rotation, but, you know, Chad, when he bought Danies, he then took over that name, took over that service when he was on rotation immediately, under a brand new name. According to the policy, that's not what it's supposed to be in. Well, then Danny got right back on rotation eight months later, and he had two on rotation that had two names.
So there was only four on rotation when we got on, and now there's one, there's seven.
I, I I will tell you a, a couple of things that I was aware of. One, there was a wreck on 19, and a wrecker company grabbed the car on all four corners, raised it straight up, and went down the road with the car swinging back and forth. Second, there's another wrecker company that used her son-in-law to go out and pick up cars, because they, they didn't have their vehicles working at the time. And that's a violation of the, of the rules and regulations also. So.
Another thing that we have added in this policy here, which I think is going to be good for the record services, is when we tow a vehicle as a wrecker service, we notify I-1, letting know what vehicle we have. Because what the increase is for is, and as I said, we get so many phone calls, hey, you got my vehicle, hey, you got my vehicle.
Right. No, that's a good idea.
We added into this policy, you just call it with the color, made, model, and say, you know, you have the car. And then that way, they can notate it when they call it I-1 center, they know where the car is.
I can remember the wrecker services actually asking for radio. Probably not moving there. That was probably a mistake, because we cut out a lot of, yeah, switch cheap. For lack of communication. Because there are areas where so far, we will not work. That was just a request back in the day.
Mike, when's the last time you've been called out on rotation?
Last Friday, Friday before last.
Okay. What about you, Kevin?
It's got some grammar problems. Spell here.
You know she's going to catch that. Where'd it go, Mike? That's a trap for you.
So if you could have somebody send a soft copy to Amy here, I trust it.
Sure, we'll get Kevin to give me the next copy to Amy.
When he gets back, but I mean, I, I, I think it's great, and thank you for explaining to us the differences and improvements to service it's going to make. And just keep in mind, it's a living document, so if, if, if something on it isn't working out, be sure to let Gary know. He's the new 911 center director, by the way. Mike Fox, Bud Fox, and this is Kevin Willis.
Met Kevin before, he towed my girlfriend's car. He's a starter.
But anyway, Kevin worked with Kevin Walker on, on putting this together. He's the one who brought the promise to our attention. But anyway, Kevin worked with Kevin Walker on, on putting this together. He's the one who brought the problems to our attention. But Gary's wide open to making adjustments to things that, you know, that makes sense. So try it out. Be sure to let him know if something's not working.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm here for you guys. And, uh, I'm all about saving time, money, and ending corruption.
You have your Superman thing on.
Someone that's spoken on by the commissioner of all the record services received that new policy, correct?
Yes. And I think we can put it on the fifteenth and probably get it knocked out. Amy, once you're done with it, you'll send it to me. I'll have it.
Do you know where she's going?
We're, well, we'll, we'll approve it on the fifteenth. We can, I mean, I don't, you guys have a problem? Do you want to go ahead and have it get started on? I mean, it's really just a matter of getting the language. All right. Well, maybe we go ahead and approve the policy, and then there's gonna be some grammar edits that we'll have ready by next week on the fifteenth.
A second.
All those in favor? All right. There it is. Let's see it. You want Bill now?
What number?
Yeah, do we need you, Bill?
See you later, Mike. See you, bye.
Bill Hines.
Yeah. Is Bill on there? She's, she's getting him, so while we're waiting. Solid Waste.
We could start at seven and go through those really quick.
Yeah. So Sam's just a appointment to the Danies PSD. The town inspired.
It's reappointment?
Yeah, Robert Richards. I believe he's actually the chairman.
Yes. You have a problem with? Go ahead.
I do not.
Most to approve.
Okay. A second. All those in favor? The next one's saying a library board appointment. And I think we didn't get any other applicants running the name honorary. Yeah, I was gonna say, I've heard her name before. I've heard it. She's been in there recently.
My most to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Yeah, Bill.
Well, I want to go ahead and knock out Solid Waste. Okay, so we've had two advocates for the Solid Waste Authority. What was Adam Hodges, who'd served on that board and other boards. The other one is Angela Gerald, who's been working on the county's dilapidated housing issues with us. It's my belief Angela would, uh, would be a better candidate for where we're trying to go with dilapidated housing and all the funding and things that we're trying to pursue. And also our evaluation of whether we need the Solid Waste Authority at all. So I move that we appoint Angela Gerald to the Solid Waste Authority.
A second.
All those in favor? I don't know whether we should offer consolation or congratulations, Angela.
She was at the last meeting. Yeah, we were both there. Hey, Angela, can you show them what you showed us where the complaint is at? On the website?
Yeah, if people pull up the website.
Oh, yeah, he is. Who is what? No, I'm just checking. Oh, Bill.
You want to wait till you're done with Bill and show them? Or you want to do it real quick?
To show us what?
The website.
Or the green, go in and how to make a complaint?
How to make a complaint? Yeah, I think we should. I feel like we should do that on a different agenda.
Okay.
Put it on the twenty-nine.
It's a, it's good. We've already had a few people using it.
We need to, um, go get with Amy to make sure we put it on our Facebook page. Angela, just make sure we put that link on our Facebook page through Amy and our, um, our website. Okay.
I think it's our, it's on the website already. It's on the website.
It's on the webpage down to the very bottom.
Yeah.
Drop down menu.
All right. So we're to Bill.
Yeah, we got Bill, so we just wanted to knock that out.
Yep. Okay, Bill. What's up?
Which one are we doing now?
Bill Hines. Number three on the.
Number three. Okay, got it.
Good afternoon, all. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. I'm trying to get my camera back on. Was having some internet problems earlier today. Um, so I appreciate your time. Definitely to have this discussion. We've got some significant movement with the Meadow River Trail project in that we are ready to go to market, um, versing with a bid for the, uh, bridge. So that, that's pretty exciting news. That should happen soon. Um, we have, uh, the trail sites, the non-bridge sites, uh, we've moved along with, uh, contractor there. And so we're actually, um, last report, we were a little further ahead than planned. So we may be having, uh, the first meeting we have, maybe a substantial completion meeting, um, as far as the, uh, individual sites are concerned. But what, what we have on the table so far, uh, right now is a, a latest ask from FEMA's request for information from the twenty-sixth of May. Uh, and they were looking for two points. Uh, one is a technical side-by-side comparison for proposed scope of work changes. Chapman Technical has provided a latest draft of that. And as of this morning, we have that. So we're gonna crunch through that and then get it into your hands. So you can review before we provide an official response, which is due by COB Monday, this coming Monday. Um, the second piece they're asking for is that we, uh, related to FEMA several months ago that we might have an additional site. Chapman has, uh, since gone through and compared, it was a, a, um, it's a non-issue. It's not an extra site, actually. It is a, was a site that was just misplaced using GPS coordinates. So we have it straight now, and we're gonna answer that question with the first piece with the, uh, uh, technical write-up from the engineer. Um, so I think that takes care of us as far as the request for information is concerned. Uh, the big focus right now, obviously, is to, to get the bridge on the market and, uh, get bids and get that moving along.
Hey, Bill, has, uh, has Chapman been behind on anything?
I, I don't. That's a, a very subjective term. Um, I don't think behind, if you will. Um, I, I, in a lot of cases, it's just, uh, working with Chapman to get their historical records and connecting the dots. Uh, they've collected a lot of data, a lot of information over the years, as you can imagine. Um, so that's the importance of having that, uh, processed. And then, you know, you can go out and take a hundred pictures of a trail site. But if you're not identifying it and locating it and all that, um, it, it does, uh, cost challenges because FEMA is a very site-specific conversation. So for Chapman's focus from the very beginning, it wasn't necessarily, if you will, looking at these individual bits and pieces, and they had an overall look of the trail. Um, what they do have, what they have had has been, uh, more helpful than not, if you will.
Did FEMA approve the extension, or do we know an update on that?
We, we don't have an update on that, and, uh, I would have expected a, uh, response from that acknowledgement that, uh, they received the extension request. However, saying, without saying it, with this RFI, they're continuing, the state and FEMA are continuing to lean forward and work with us on uh, this project worksheet, um, since it's long in the tooth. But they, they continue to work with us on this. So I see, I view this RFI as a good sign. But, uh, we don't have the official approval on that just yet.
Is that something the commission has to sign? Whatever that they want by the end of that Monday?
It would be nice. Um, uh, Ruth, you're on the request for public assistance as an, uh, uh, applicant representative. So you could sign it. I would always, you know, prefer to have it on a county letterhead. Um, just a cover letter, if you will. So it's at the discretion of the commission, how you guys, um, want to move forward with answering that piece officially.
So we're submitting, so basically, you're talking about this response to the RFI?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. So number one will be the technical comparison, the scope of work comparison. And then number two will be a non-issue. It'll go away on its own.
I don't mind putting a, a cover letter on it saying, you know, you're attached as our response, the RFI with our signatures. I don't think I want to adopt all of this language and analysis that I, we don't, we didn't prepare or understand that well as our own. Would that suffice if we put a cover letter on and say, please reference our?
That would, that would. I, uh, I'll work with Ruth to gin up a, a quick narrative, uh, and then run it by you, um, before we have to suspend it. That's the extent of that for now.
Yeah.
I move that we submit a, a cover letter with this, uh, response attached to it. To FEMA. Based on the recommendations by our consultants.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So why don't you come up with that language and then, Bill, if you'll come up with that language and send it to Ruth. They'll get it in letterhead and run it by the three of us. We've already approved the concept. We just, you know, wanna, I want everybody to lay eyes on the letter before we sign it.
Will do.
Yes. Okay. You can be saying, can't understand. So once you, yeah, once you hear from us or, or one of me saying I'm talking to the others or whatever. Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you all. You have a good day. Ruth, I'll talk to you.
All right.
That was a real conservative way of answering.
Politician. All right. So what do you want to do next?
All right. So the, um, Records Management Preservation Board grant board. Like this is basically accepting that, right, Amy?
It's the agreement, I think. Let me get to it.
Yeah.
It's for county clerk and hours. It's just our standard paperwork that we sign with the state saying we'll follow their rules and they'll give us money.
So this is where we applied for all that stuff and, and we got the grant?
Yes.
Yeah, so county clerk's gonna get their.
All right. Well, I'm, I move that we approve this.
Second.
Acceptance. All those favor.
So the next one is that payroll change we talked about, like it's depending on the way. And I'm just gonna say, let's not do that. And a lot of it is deficiencies in our accounting software and our reality. We'd have to deal away with our payroll clearing account. I do not want to do that. We'd have to redo our, our entire accounting system.
Yeah. So just for a little history, we were looking at trying to get into where we were paying people two weeks in arrears. Most places you start, you get your first paycheck, you know, after you've been there a month. We're not doing that. And so we're basically paying people, and we'll find out once they leave the county that they're, you know, paying them, and they might not have worked those last couple of days or something like that. And that's something that keeps coming up. Um, and so Ruth looked into whether we could do a one-week delay. Then she looked and found out that was not gonna work because of a bunch of how the numbers, plants have to align in order for things to function here. So then she looked into a two-week delay that would have been easier in concept, but that still is gonna cause a big mess and disable their ability within the current accounting system to catch other types of small discrepancies that come up on a regular basis.
And also violate state code.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because the twelve day.
Right, the two weeks, right. So there's a twelve, there's also a twelve-day rule that wouldn't allow us to do it. So unless we changed our pay periods, and God forbid, after the state did to every. We do not. Yeah. So. Right, right, right. So, um, so basically, this idea was overtaken by events and will probably never raise its head again. Right. Moving on. Holiday changes, let me talk about. Okay, so a few weeks ago, you know, we were under the impression legitimately that the governor had created a holiday, Juneteenth, for June seventeenth. And, um, or that was when we were gonna celebrate it this year. And we voted to conform with the governor's calendar, as we tend to do. And we thought the governors and the Supreme Court's calendars were in alignment, and everybody was in agreement. Well, everybody else changed their calendar and left us hanging after we made that decision. So now, Juneteenth at the state level, both through the Supreme Court and the governor, is being celebrated with West Virginia Day. It's being celebrated and acknowledged, but there's no additional day off. We already voted to have a day off on the seventeenth this year. And it's my view, um, and, and I'll just throw it out there and then leave it open for discussion. But it's my view that we should stick with what we decided, give our employees the seventeenth off. Let the office chiefs work out how they're gonna man their offices between giving somebody the free day off on the Monday after or, and seventeenth off Friday. So if they want to give them Tuesday off, then give them Tuesday off. But I don't think we should rescind it, you know, weeks after we granted it, um, this year. I do think, however, for next year, we should, you know, realign our calendar with that at the state and maybe wait and make sure the state has made up its mind before we put ours in place. That's mine. I'm throwing it out there.
Yeah, I'm with you. Somebody could have made up, like, they could already have made plans and everything. So.
I agree.
Okay. So I move that we, um, keep the holiday as designated for this year only. Um, and next year, we will revisit our county calendar based upon the state's final calendar from the Supreme Courts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So the courthouse will be open or only for?
On the seventeenth. It's my understanding it will be open. It'll be my office. What I did is, you have the, you know, staff, you go up to the seventeenth. And then those that work on the seventeenth can have the following Tuesday off.
Now, for us, now, you know, and I don't know, I guess, I guess our guidance to the elected should be if they have not, at these offices, because the Supreme Court is open.
Right.
And so that's gonna count probation, right? Probation circuit court. So you can decide whether to go to, yeah, skeleton staff on both of those days or how you're gonna do it. But we might have some, because the state is also open. You know, the county clerk and the assessor, you know, they're gonna have to figure out whether they have some accountability to those offices at the state level or not. But, but I feel like that's up to them. Um, so the courthouse building will be open, and you'll have to figure out who of your staff should be here and who shouldn't. And I just feel like, I have, I think we should delegate that to Ruth and, and let the other electeds figure out. Well, she knows who, she knows who is projected leave. She knows who wants to be here, you know, who's, who can be here. So. You know, I figure she can just decide, you know, who's gonna be here what days. And, you know, we'll probably go ahead and, probably have to have somebody for maintenance here, obviously, the other people in the building. Um, it, I don't know how it'll affect the park, you know, day report center. Their parks, port center's gonna have to be at least partially open because ports are open. So basically, just anybody who hasn't made plans should probably take Tuesday off instead of Friday. Yes, that's what I think. But if you'll send an email out to the electeds and just let them know what we decided, and they can figure out how to man their offices to the extent they feel they need to on the seventeenth. Okay. And that sounds like a mess up like a pay period thing, right? For the same pay period. Oh, thank God. Okay. All right. So. Moving on. So we owe Joe some money from where he's been acting director of nine-one-one, right?
Okay. I would like to move to go into executive session on this to get information from. I would like to move to go into executive session on this to get information from our attorney.
One employee issue.
On, on Joe's retroactive pay. When he was acting director. Okay, yep. We are. So back on the record, 12:40. Oh, we did was clarify that we are, um, discussing, clarified that because, um, all the other promotions for the 911 center were effective or the employee changes were effective July 1st of this year. Um, Joe Chris payment adjustment for the deputy director position was effective as of, um, April 25th of this year because we asked him, beginning that day, to assume the responsibilities as deputy director, um, for which he was not at that time being compensated. And he did assume those responsibilities that day and continued to be, uh, acting director and deputy director until the director started acting first. So this is with regard to, because we did not, and we meant to say it in our public meeting before, um, we wanted to make this retroactive today. So I move that, um, we go ahead with just Joe's payback to April 25th, um, from his previous rate, uh, forty-three thousand nine hundred a year to fifty-two thousand even a year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That means we owe him a total of eight hundred forty-three seventy-five dollars.
We'll have George delegate the numbers, but.
And, and you'll make that, and you'll deposit that in his next paycheck. All right. Did everybody say aye?
Yeah.
Okay. So Brownfields.
Where's Angela? She went to the test office. She'll be back.
Do you want to go to budget revision?
Uh, we can give her a second to look back. Because she's got some information from her side of it.
So this budget revision, uh, is just making sure all of the accounts from the end of the year, so June 30th. It's mostly hotel motel packs, barn, preservation, that type of stuff. Nothing major. It's just the end of the year adjustment.
Our, um, our ladies from the community society wanted to understand what the budget adjustment means and what kind of things happened with that. I told them it's kind of a routine thing that we do. It doesn't always, it doesn't, we try to do it at the end of the fiscal year because there's always something, you know, some nickel and dimes that we find out, like we have more taxes than we thought or something like that. And she makes those adjustments, but we can do them at any time. We just, um, tend to do them before the fiscal year starts, which is, we're trying to do that now. Am I going to get that right?
I mean, basically, we have to adjust hotel motel. It's always a guess. So is the property transfer tax, building permits. Those are all guesses. State grants. We guess and then we adjust it to reality. It's probably expensive.
And then with anything else, this is a living document, so it can be altered multiple times or as needed, but we try to hold on to it. And, uh, less.
I like to adjust it a lot. We just try to keep, you know, adjusted as we have to. Because every time we do it, she has to go through a bunch of hoops and then we have to follow the auditor.
Actually, G is going through all the hoops now.
Somebody on our staff has to go through. Did you hear that, Gia? She is happy that. She is always tuned in. Okay. So what do we need to do? Approve it?
Motion to approve and then you have to sign.
Yeah. I'm making a motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Uh, aye. I think we have to do the second.
I looked for it. I don't know where she's been.
So this is just a, make sure that they have Allison's contact information on this next one, right?
Well, actually.
And if they have any issues, they can contact her.
No. With all due respect, we don't want Allison to be the one signing.
I'm going to start getting back. You guys know what your budget is, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Want to make sure.
Was I close to being right? I was, I guess. So I said one eighty, I guess.
So was it more than a dollar fifty-nine? It's just a joke.
Okay. I didn't get it either.
Yeah.
But listen, it has been a long morning. So you could be the cleverest man on earth right now and I would not get your jokes because I am brain dead. So, um, do you want to start now or do?
Yeah, we need to go ahead.
I was just.
I'm good right now. Thank you. Thank you for asking.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rest. Okay. So the Brownfields grant, um, we have to go through, um, basically, now that you've received the grant and, um, they've approved for you to get the money, you have to prove that you would be a good steward of the money. Um, so we have to kind of jump through some hoops and she's coming in. And so anyway, so we have to fill out all these forms. And my contact, um, in Philadelphia, who is Christian Smith with, um, with the grant, said that it's the best to have your authorized representative to be someone who is here on a regular basis because there's a lot of, we'll have to change things and, um, need signatures pretty quickly. And so having that person be the commission president and sign in the open meeting, um, kind of would start jamming up some things. So he suggested having someone who's on, um, campus regularly be your authorized representative. So this first form, I've already got it completed. I just need you to authorize Ruth to be, um, your authorized representative available to, or, and allowed to sign on your behalf on all these forms that we're going to have to be submitting over the next three years as the food course of this grant. And then I've got the payee is set up as Anna Ross, and she has access to our bank accounts. So everything's direct deposit and she would have to go in and draw it down. And then he said that I can be both the administrative contact and the project manager. And he said that the, it's very important for everything to be consistent. That's why they have these key contact forms. We fill this out and unless someone's leaves the county, we need to stick by those. The second letter is, um, part of the intergovernmental review. We have to basically, um, send our application for the Brownfields grant that has already been approved along with this letter, which they made this template. And, um, and I had to locate our, um, community development, um, local division person who's in Charleston, is Mary Jo Thompson. Um, we addressed it to her. She reviews our grant and basically vouches for the county. But we will be, um, able to maintain and administer this grant. So that's, this is basically hoop jumping that we have right now. And then once you authorize Ruth, I have three other forms that I need to fill out, which is just county information, but she'll have to sign them. And I have to have those submitted by, um, Friday.
So at what point do we want to discuss? Because this is for what Gabe put in, right, for the crack school and all that stuff. And we haven't decided for sure that that's exactly where we want it to go, right?
This is all basically preliminary before they, they don't even, at this point, care what we're using it for. It's just kind of good stewards kind of use it correctly, proving that.
I understand that.
And then Angela has been, Region Four has this similar grant and they're a year into it?
Yeah, they're a year into it and that's why I mentioned Ruth that it's pretty soon. So Region Four is requesting properties as well. So at some point in time, commission needs to decide which ones we want to submit for Region Four to work on and which ones you guys want to work on.
Right. Region Four's money is farther along, like they have.
They haven't chosen properties yet. They have chosen their junior farm and they started with their, trying to buy, get properties. Their is the same rate as a community-wide grant. It just was still a community.
But they have the, um, they have the flexibility to go within municipalities.
Yeah, they go anywhere in their.
Where we.
I'd like to make an administrative meeting with Region Four and us to discuss this.
Why don't we, why don't we set it for one of the July meetings? I know June 29th is starting to stack up. We have to do it for like the first July.
And that's not too late, is it?
No. So just to let you know, Region Four, about the end of July is going to have another, like you guys, um, I'm kind of a Bay County volunteer to help with the property. So I want to figure out which one county's doing. I don't want to give those three to four.
Well, that's why I want to have an administrative meeting and something that you would be involved in.
When do we want to know? Because like our next administrative meeting is July 11th. Is that soon enough?
Yeah, they will, they will meet till like the twenty-something. So, yeah, but what they're doing is they send a survey out to all, and I believe the commission has that survey. It's, yes, okay.
Will that be soon enough? Will the 13th be soon enough to get them our feedback?
Yes, because they, I mean, it'll still be several months before they actually get the property. I would like to, in working with Amy, know which ones. And I've talked to Mr. Tubbell about the main one that's on our grant. And they have said that they would be able to take that on.
But we have to wait for your committee to vote and prioritize.
Yeah, they'll sort of prioritize it, but that can always be, if they don't take that big property, then at the end of our grant, you guys can keep that.
You guys be prepared to discuss our priorities or as you see them and as we articulated them over time with us on July 11th at 2:00 PM.
No, it's a Monday. It's a Monday.
It's a Monday. It's the free, it's the admin meeting for the 13th.
Oh, did we change that? I, I don't have.
Not way we can put it on the agenda for the 13th.
I don't have that on mine. I have the fourth. No, I don't.
Holiday.
Gosh, a full day's holiday.
You, if you're going to make us meet on the fourth, you better bring hot dogs.
Okay, eleven. So the 11th is what we're looking at. Two o'clock.
You're making us meet on the fourth.
Obviously, I, I want to set some expectations really quickly. So, um, anything you guys do, it needs to go through Ruth. Um, Ruth, anything you think that we need to know about, I don't care if it's me that you're signing for, if you put on admin meeting so we can all discuss it. And then if we need to get it on agenda to make a decision on, then we'll do that.
I, I'd like to read it for you.
Oh, yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, I'm sorry.
She's the main contact for Region Four on that. Their grant is at that more.
Well, if you, if you want to invite Betsy to that meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. Ruth, I mean.
11th at 2:00. I thought you and Amy might want to just have some talks in advance and then come to the meeting with some ideas.
And you signed the letter to Mary Jo?
I have not signed it yet.
Yeah, because that was like. Okay, sorry.
All right. I move that we approve, um, this letter to Mary Jo without, which outlines, um, the key contacts that Amy described to us previously under the terms that we just now discussed on the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I need you to authorize Ruth to be your authorized.
That was part of the terms, but just to get clear. I move that we authorize Ruth to be our, um, representative with regard to this grant. Um, under the conditions I outlined, that she, um, coordinate, oversee all the other activity on the grant and that she coordinate any major decisions, uh, with the commissioners and, and get it on the agenda. That's a long motion, but that's a motion.
Do I renew a second?
It's a second, second.
Okay. Second.
All those favor. All right. Anything else? Any other business?
I don't think so.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Hey, we got out here before we thought we would.
I know.
It was one o'clock. We could still have time to eat.
Yeah. So there is a meeting.